Recording and I will open. The sample. So. Sample, sample final example. And I'll also open up my previous. Attempt at this, just to see what's going on. Okay, so. Let's. Start. Recording, everybody's here. Okay, good. So first question. Uh, consider blah, blah, blah. I'll just put the picture. Consider SOC consisting of various functional modules. It is organized as a pipeline of six functional units whose details are in execution times are below. These times do not include the overclocking, the clocking overhead of point five nanoseconds, which means like, like, uh, the clock. Has to include a point five nanosecond period where it's not doing anything. The functional units are listed in suitable order, F1 to F6 to perform the overall SOC function. We have all these things here, right? So determine the optimum number of pipeline stages. So when he says determine the optimum number of pipeline stages, he does not mean determine the optimum number of pipeline stages. Because we don't have enough information, we don't have enough everything like that. Apparently, from what I've gathered, he really just means like, just try it out a little bit. Like, what if there's only six, six pipeline stages, right? If there's only six pipeline stages as there is right now. Then we look at our longest paths, 5.5. And so our clock needs to be six nanoseconds, 5.5. Plus the point five from the clocking overhead. Right? Plus the point five nanoseconds from the clocking overhead. So our clock has to be six nanoseconds. And then how long will it take the computer to for a thousand times for the pipeline to go through, right? Like very poorly, poorly worded question, but like a thousand iterations of this. Well, remember that the, the time is going to be the clock. I'll just say like T clock. Times the number of. Number of steps or whatever, number of clocks that are needed. And so that's going to be the number of pipeline stages plus one minus the number of. Operations, right? So it's S plus one or N minus one, not one minus, sorry, N minus one. So this is going to be, uh, this is the number of stages. And this is number of iterations. And so whatever, our answer is going to be six nanose, or six, whatever, times there's six stages plus nine, nine, nine. And six times six plus nine, nine, nine is sixty thirty nanoseconds. And so that, you know, I didn't determine the number of optimal, the optimum number of pipeline stages. I just chose six. And then we're supposed to just kind of like try seven, right? So that means like, look at the execution times and see, is there one that's kind of standing out? Ideally, we want all the execution times to be approximately the same for every stage. Uh, 5.5 stands out here, right? So we could break that into two stages, right? You could break that into a, a two point seven five and another two point seven five nanosecond stage. Right? And when you do that, then it's kind of more even, right? The 5.5 was really kind of much higher, like a whole second higher than everything else. But, uh, the highest one now, which is this 4.5 is, is only point two higher than the next one. So this really was sticking out here. So we'd like to maybe just simplify this. Like to, to reduce it into two. And so we have seven stages now. Our clock time is, you know, you find the longest, longest stage. The longest stage, again, like I said, is 4.5 now. Right? So it's going to be 4.5 nanoseconds. Plus the point five nanosecond overhead is five nanoseconds. And then same thing here, it's going to be five times, we have seven stages plus nine, nine, nine. Five times seven stages plus nine, nine, nine is fifty thirty. So clearly an improvement, right? It's faster. Now, that's not the only thing that's like improved here, right? Like, well, that's not the only thing that matters. It's like, if you were to just keep going and you were just have seven stages, eight stages, nine stages, 10 stages, 11 stages, and you just keep splitting the longest one and two, this time will keep going down. But, you know. Not, it does not explain properly in the question, but we're not, we're not supposed to do that, right? We're not, we're not finding the optimum number of pipeline stages. Like that is not what this is trying to get to get us to do. It's just asking us to try different numbers of pipelines, like different pipeline, um. Amounts and see what happens, right? If you add more stages, you have more logic and all that, so it's going to actually going to get worse, the performance. But just theoretical time here, it's going to get better. That's it. That's question one. So I'll just leave that there, but there's that. Uh, if anybody has any questions, you can stop me or you can, you can. Say something in the meeting chat. Next one. Says, list the difference between SC thread and SC methods are question two here. SC thread and SC method implementation system C, explain how SC thread may be implemented to run with the same characteristics as SC method. Right? So basically like SC thread is like triggered, it's like always looping, right? It's, it's triggered by the clock and it just kind of always loops. SC method is like triggered by other things, right? Uh, but if you just took SC method and put it, take SC method, right? Yeah, you take SC method and you put it in a while loop, or you put a while loop in it, right? And you just say while one. And then you have like a wait command. Right? This wait will just wait for the trigger and then it's going to do the same thing. Right? It's going to wait for the, for the module to be triggered and then it's going to, it's going to execute, which is the same thing as like what a SC thread is doing. So, yeah, that's basically. That's basically. If anybody has anything to add, feel free. But, uh, yeah, if you just put a while loop in an SC method, it's the same thing as SC thread. I don't know if we're going to get questions like that, but it's on the sample, so. How close was the sample midterm and the, and the midterm? I think relatively close. I think relatively close. If I remember correctly. Very comparable. Now, I, I don't want to worry you, but I do recall it from seven, one, eight, if you, if you didn't take seven, one, eight. The sample final and the actual final were different. Like they weren't, they weren't the same questions. I hope he's not going to pull that again, right? Luckily, uh, you know, we, we worked out like, it wasn't wildly different. It wasn't crazy different, but it was different than what he posed. The problem solving questions, yeah. Had like one or two different questions in seven, one, eight, right? So like, that's what I mean. It wasn't exactly the same types of questions. It was like, there were one or two questions that were just different. But. Who knows? We'll see. So next one, it says, consider the SOC given below consisting of a CPU, memory and accelerator core. CPU, memory, accelerator core. Uh, sixty percent of the bus transactions move data between memory and the CPU, so like that. Which take thirty-two clock cycles. The other forty percent of the transactions move data back and forth between the CPU and the accelerator, taking fifty-two clock cycles. Memory transfers occur every three hundred clock cycles, whereas accelerator. CPU transfers happen every one fifty. Determine the bus occupancy of the system. So, you know, we can kind of draw a timeline here, right? So in three hundred, oh, zero, I guess, right, zero. And then, you know, at, at, at the three hundred mark, right? We're going to, uh, well, let's just say, let's just draw like this, right? At the, at three hundred nanosecond mark, right? We are expecting to have, uh, three transfers happen, right? Memory transfers happen every three hundred CCs and accelerator CPU transfers happen every one fifty. So over this three hundred nanoseconds, we expect to have three transactions. To find the occupancy, right? We'd like to figure out the average, this is just how we do it, the average, uh, length of a bus transaction. Average BTT, right? Bus transaction time. And so this is going to be, well, we, it's kind of like, you find the expected value, right? So it's like, we know that like point six of the time, it's going to take thirty-two clock cycles. And point four of the time, it's going to take fifty-two clock cycles. So this is, I think, forty, if I remember, zero point six times thirty-two plus zero point four times fifty-two. It's forty. So we know that on average, every, every transaction is going to take forty clock cycles. So for the occupancy. For the occupancy. You do the, it's like BTT. Over like total. Right? So importantly, like the, the clock kind of stops while there's a transaction happening. These are blocking, blocking bus transactions, right? So like the, the, uh, the clock kind of stops. So the total time is going to be, uh, the BTT over BTT plus like. Comp time or something like that. I'll just say time. I don't know what to call it, but anyways. So the, the bus transaction time, well, it's going to be forty times three, because we have three transactions happening. Over forty times three plus three hundred, right? Three hundred clocks are passing, forty times three, uh. So a hundred twenty clocks, uh, will be used because of three hundred clocks passing. So this is going to be forty times three over forty times three plus three hundred. So I get about twenty-nine percent. And that's the bus occupancy. At the end of the day, what did really, really calculate? We calculated that and we calculated that. It was two steps. Uh, it's three transactions because it says memory transfers occur every three hundred clock cycles. Accelerator to CPU transfers happen every one fifty clock cycles. So that means in three hundred, we're expected to get three transactions, two accelerator ones and one memory transfer. You could see, and I'm choosing three hundred clock cycles kind of arbitrarily. I could have chosen six hundred and then I'd expect to get, I'd expect to get six transactions. And would it be the same? Yeah, well, maybe, probably would be the same, yeah. It's going to be times six, times six. Six? Yeah, it's the same number, right? Get the same, if you just assume. So it doesn't matter how many you assume. Just the, you know, lowest common multiple. I will keep going, but anybody, please stop me if you have any questions or want to talk about anything, it's all good. So consider the, oops, consider the four by four two D, I guess I'll make it bigger. Mesh topology NOC shown in that figure. The NOC cores are labeled one sixteen. NOC routers are connected via thirty-two bit wide channels. So these are thirty-two bit wide channels. Okay, someone says question, it's one transaction to move data from, and then move back and forth. Uh, it's one transaction and then, oh yeah, sure, sure. But then it like, it, it, which means it triggers the bus twice. Transfers occur every one fifty CCs. Sure, yeah, exactly. Either way, as the words of the question describe that, but yeah, makes sense. So, uh, these wires are thirty-two bit, I mean, I'm assuming, I'm assuming the arrow is just missing here, right? Probably, it doesn't really matter if it, if it is or not, actually, because we're going from, where are we going? We're going from eight to thirteen. So yeah, you could just avoid that, you can just go like that, never mind, doesn't matter. But, so we have, um, thirty-two bit wide channels, thirty-two bits. Wormhole routing, NOC is being operated at one gigahertz, one kilobits of data is being seen, sent from eight to three. So, you know, eight to thirteen, I mean, so you go like that. Uh, data is transferred as a packet consisting of thirty-two bit size files, a flit, I mean. Determine the number of flits of the packet. So we know we have one kilobit. Of data, which means we have two to the ten bits. We know that the flit size, right, flit size is thirty-two bits. So our data is going to take up two to the ten over thirty-two, thirty-two, uh, flits, which is going to be, uh, thirty-two flits. We still have a header, so thirty-three, let's. Including header. This is the data, right? So we need a header flip. Including. Header. So that's how many flits we have. We have thirty-three flits that are being sent. Then we have calculate the time required to transfer the one kilobit data packet from core. Uh, eight to thirteen by using XY routing. So we need the number of hops, right? Because that's going to, that's going to matter, right? That's going to tell us the time. So one, two, three, four, five hops, five hops. We know that the clock. Is one gigahertz. One, one gigahertz clock, which corresponds to a one nanosecond period. And then. Yeah, and then essentially from here, we have just that the, the time, it's kind of the same, like, same as like pipelining, right? The time is going to be the clock time. S plus N minus one, right? S is the pipeline, so this is like a, you know, basically like, it's not, it's not sent sequentially, right? The, you've sent the first packet and then while the next packet is being moved, the first, the, the second packet can go into the wormhole. So it's all being pipelined. How many stages in the pipeline? Well, it's five stages because of five hops, right? So it's going to be five stages. And then. N minus one is like, how, N is how many loops we're going through this, right? And it's thirty-three times. So the, so the answer is going to be one nanosecond times five plus thirty-three minus one. Right? Because there's thirty-three flits that are being sent. So this is five, so thirty-seven, right? Thirty-seven nanoseconds. There you go, thirty-seven nanoseconds. That's all for that one. Next one. You know, I'm going relatively fast through this because I'm assuming everybody's done this already, but it's good to just see it again. Some things to, to look at. So true, false, right? APB operates at a lower clock rate than AHB, different bus types. The P is for peripheral, the H is for high performance. So the high performance one will definitely work at a higher clock rate. So that it's faster. So this is false. Or wait, sorry, AP, no, no, it's true. APB is a lower clock, it's slower, yes, there we go, forgot. No, it said lower or higher there. So APB, the slower one, is lower clock rate than AHB, the high performance one. Core connect bus supports concurrent read and write bus transactions. I mean. This is just, uh, this is purely knowledge one, right? This is just purely like, does it? It does. These ones will be, you know, you just have to be lucky, that, like, you read that slide to answer these questions. Cortex A9 is mainly employed for real-time applications. This is false. So the Cortex. R series. Is for real-time applications. Is the R series. Apple A5 SOC, blah, 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 blah. Again, just yes, if you just read the slides, then yes, that is, that is true. AMBA AHB light bus, which is the AHB bus, whatever, has a higher bandwidth than the AXI bus. Uh, I forget now, I think this is false because the AXI bus is like the newer one. This is like the two point O, right? And this is like the three point O, three point O, better than, you know, higher number than two point O. So probably it is faster. So this is probably false. Cortex A9 processors are used in desktop or stations, this is false. ARM, the, you know, it's most, you know, mostly for embedded, mostly. For embedded. Embedded applications. There's that. And now the last question is the drawing question. Drawing question isn't too bad. It's, uh, you know, it looks like a lot. But. Once you look at enough diagrams. Does make sense. I mean, as long as it's still on the test, it's, it's AHB. It's going to be okay. Uh, let's, let me open this back up here, okay. So the prof showed one. Showed a solution that was apparently correct for this. Um, so some of the numbers don't make sense in it. I think he just didn't see that, that some of the numbers don't make sense. Anyways, let's just, let's just try to draw it from scratch here. So we have, um, a, a master processor that must perform four beat burst increment four. Followed by increment four burst write operations to and from memory. From addresses forty-eight and sixty-four respectively. That, those are the numbers that don't make sense in the solution. I think it doesn't matter, just these were different. AMBA two point O bus, you know, AHB bus is employed to connect the master with the memory device. Draw the timing diagram for the above transfers with respect to the clock. If the memory device does not require any additional time to complete the read or write operations. Your timing diagram may include all these things or other signals. So there's no additional time, so it's like, you know, the ideal situation, let's, let's just draw it out. So we have H clock. We have H adder. We have H write. We have H trans. We have H read data. We have H write data. And that's all that really matters. We can add more signals at the bottom if we, if we really want to, but it doesn't matter. Okay, so let's say, uh, you know, I'm going to start here, maybe I'll just like, say like, this is what I'm going to. Copy, I'll make it a little bit bigger. Like that. Okay, and then I'll, where should I, I should go like this and then like this, and then I'll just. Copy that a few times. We're going to need eight clocks, right? We need eight clocks here, so a little shorter than I wanted, but maybe I'll put that. There. So we have one, two, three, four. Five, six, seven, eight, and then we maybe need one more clock. Which is fine. Okay, so there's our clocks. Just put one more clock there, there you go, okay. So to begin, right, the, all these lines are whatever, right? Like, we don't care what these lines are. So it's just like, whatever is in here at the start. And this is our first clock. And so on this clock, we got to think about what's happening. So, um, first of all, the address is going to be set. Right? So I guess like, maybe it does a little too big because now that's going to be huge, but anyways. So the first address, well, what does it say? It says, the first thing I have to do is a, a read from forty-eight, right? So we're going to say zero X forty-eight. And then, so the address, it's, it's a, it's a burst, right? So we're just going to, let me just draw that dash here. It's just going to be going up by, by, uh, four. Right? It's thirty-two bit, so it's going to go up by four every time. So it's, uh, this is going to be forty, it's forty-eight, so then it's four. Zero X four C. C, right? Yeah, okay, C. And then. The next one, again, just kind of going on an angle here, I don't mean to go on an angle. This is zero X, uh, four, C, D, E, F, five. So it's going to be five, zero. And then. Zero X fifty-four, right? Because that's the addresses. And then let's think about the data, right? We're writing, so it's going to be write data. Now we, um. We. Don't send this at the same time, right? We're writing, no, we're reading, sorry, we're reading. So we're reading the data. So the data that's being read is on the next clock here, right? So the way we kind of indicate that is it's zero X forty-eight. Not that that's the data being sent, but it's like the memory associated with the address zero X forty-eight is being read in this clock. Let me check my. Oh, someone's here. Someone's about saying something. The address in the question looks like it's in decimal format, since it doesn't specify hex address, you need to convert to hex. Oh, okay, that's why it looks different, right? So forty-eight in hex is equal to zero X, what is it? Sixteen thirty-two, so that there's. It's thirty. What is it? Thirty, si- sixty? How's hex working? It's, uh, let's just do forty in binary, so it's going to be, uh, thirty-two. Four, five, is thirty, okay, thank you, it's thirty. Uh, okay, so that's why the prof solution is, has that? I guess so. Okay. I'm willing to accept that because it does not say zero X forty-eight, you're right. I would just say this, right? Just write this on a piece of paper. And then, uh, and see this here, yeah, let me, let me, we open up. Let me maybe open up the solution here. Yeah, zero X thirty, zero X, yeah, okay, okay, so that's, I would agree. So zero X thirty here then, zero X thirty-four. And then thirty-eight. And then three C. Yeah. And then the data, HR data, yeah, zero X thirty. And then we read the data from. Zero X thirty-four. And then we read the data from zero X thirty-eight. And then we read the data from, my, my, my hexagons are getting bad, but zero X three C. So we read the data there. And let's think about also our, these other signals here, right? So the H, H write, you know, if it's asserted, then we're writing. If it's, if it's zero, then we're not writing. We're reading, so it's going to be reading this whole time, right? We're going to be, we're going to be low. You know, lo- lo- low here, so. Right? It's going to go low. Okay, so that's low the whole time. Then, uh, what else? H trans, right? H trans is telling us kind of like our, our, our type, like the type of thing that's going on, right? So always the first one in a burst, the type is called no sequence, right? Or non-sequence? Non-sequence, non-sequence. And this just means that it's not part of a sequence. It's just like the fir-, it could just be the first one. Or this is also the type, if you just have like a single write, like it's just from one memory address, you're writing, it's just non-sequence, there's no sequence. But then the next one's called sequence because it's part of a sequence. Right? It's part of a sequence. So then we have three SEQs, SEQs here, right? We have three SEQs. Um, and then that's the, that's the read done, the read is done, right? This, at the, the, the write data, we don't care. This whole time, we don't care, right? It's just like, whatever is happening. Then we need to read, no, we need to write to the memory, right? So we're going to start putting things on the write data here. But the first thing we need to do is we need to, uh, start initializing that. Now, the question says that it does not, does not require any additional clocks to complete, complete it. So we're assuming that there's no additional clocks for the, uh, for the like requests, the bus request and stuff like that, just because it says so. You know? Yeah, probably it is okay if you just say your, your values are decimal, that's, that probably is fine. So, yeah, so we have to, uh, what was I saying? Oh yeah, we have no, we have no more clock, we, we don't have a clock for requests because it just, it says that it doesn't need any additional clocks. So because of that, we can just go right into writing the address, the address for the, the next one, the next transaction. And, and the address for the next transaction is a sixty-four, right? Uh, which is going to be zero X four, right? Zero X, I mean forty. Um, so this is going to be zero X forty. And then continuing on here, right? One, two, one, two, three, four. And so we're going to have all these addresses because it has to go on the address bus. And we're going to be writing like this. Zero X forty-eight. Zero X, uh, four C. And that's going to be transferring. And then we need to switch our write to high, right? So we need to write to high. Yeah, there's going to be a transient here every time, just like that it's unreadable. I don't know if that's, I don't know if that's important to actually write in the, in the solution, probably not. And then this is just going to go all the way across, it's going to be, we're going to be writing the whole time there like that, right? So we're going to get a little transient every time. So we're going to be writing that whole time. Then we need to change these other things, right? So first of all, this is going to be non-sequence, right? Because it's the first one of a burst. So it's going to be non-sequence. And then it's also, the rest of these are going to be sequences, right? Part of a sequence. And then sequence, SEQ. And now our data, right, our write data. So our write data. I mean, I suppose it has to start on the next one, just because it's pipelined. So the write data. I mean, I suppose it has to start on the next one, just because it's pipelined. So the write data. Starts on clock five. So this is one, two, three, four, five, six. I guess I should start counting zero. Yeah. So I guess just start counting at zero here. So this is zero, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. So we need, well, but I guess you're counting how many clocks are part, I don't know, anyways, one clock, two, yeah, so that's fine. So then. Um. Yeah. The data. This write data, which is because we're doing a write operation now, that is gonna start on the next clock, because it's pipelined. So you, you do it on the next clock there while you're loading in the next address here. So this is going to be the, uh, the data for zero X forty. This is gonna be the data for zero X forty-four. This is gonna be the data for zero X forty-eight. And this is gonna be the, this terrible hexagon, but zero X four C. And so it takes, well, it takes nine clocks, right? What, what is the solution? Let me look at the solution again. Let me get it up. So it takes. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Uh, am I missing a clock somewhere? What, what's happening? So this is, I'm just looking at, comparing the solution here. This is zero X thirty is at the end of one. Four, clock four is SEQ. Non-sequence is five and it's forty. And then. Five and it's forty. Six, forty-four, seven, forty-eight. Eight, four, C. Oh, yeah, and nine, I guess, to get to the end of this, at the end of this one. That's the, that's the point. I'm just reading it from the wrong side. I guess it's nine to get to the end of that. And after that, at that ninth clock, that, at that instant, it's done. Because I guess we don't start counting it. We don't count this first clock, right? We count how many clocks have passed. Or you can count this first clock and not count the last. You have nine either way. Nine clocks have to pass. There are other signals that we can put on though, right? So there's also H size, right? Which is just a signal on this kind of bus, H size. And H size is the whole time. Constant, the same thing. It's just gonna be word. It's like one, 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 zero, zero, one, zero. I don't, like, you know, do we have to memorize the code here? I don't know. But there is an H size signal. Right? That's just gonna be constant the entire time. And it's just saying that we are transferring words, right? But it's, uh, well, it doesn't actually say words. But because it's like, I guess thirty-two bits, right? So it's gonna be a word. I'm assuming we're transferring the whole word here, right? So word. And then we also have, what's the other one? H ready, but that doesn't really matter. And then H burst. Burst. Which tells you what kind of burst is happening, and this is increment four. Right? This is an increment four burst. I could see it on the test being like a wrap four, right? That's, that's an easy change for him to make, right? So this is increment. Four. And if it was a wrap four, then it would just go, uh, what would it do? It would just go, actually, nothing would change here, would it? It would still be thirty, thirty-four, thirty-eight, three C, or would this loop back to thirty? No, I don't think it would loop back to thirty. I think that would just say the same. I could check out my notes here. Uh, he doesn't say to include the bus requests in the timing diagram, but would there not be two bus request cycles, one for the read and one for the write? I agree with you. But I agree with you. Yes. But he says. He says that, 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 there is no time required for it, so. I guess not. Um. Okay, there we go. So that's pretty much the solution. And so then, determine the number of clock cycles required to initiate and perform the above read and write burst transfer. So initiate. Seems to tell me that there's, now we have to include the, the transfer clocks. There's definitely at least nine. Uh, there's definitely at least nine clocks, right? Clock cycles. But are we adding more? Well, we could initiate, so initiate could mean this, but it could also just mean this is initiating. I don't really know. Does anybody have the answer from what he said? Is it in the sample? Is it in the solution? I don't think so, right? He didn't solve this. He didn't give an answer. Does anybody know what number, if he, if he said a number, that was the correct answer for? For B here? Because according to this, nothing. But then if you want to initiate, well, then you'd need two clock cycles here, wouldn't you, right? To initiate it, request and grant, or maybe just one clock cycle, just request. And then a clock cycle here too, right? Request and grant. So ten in total? Yeah, I understand. But the, okay, so, so ten. Yeah, how do I have nine? How did, where did I get nine from? Because it's, it's for this op-, yeah, the nine is confusing me, but it's because it's pipelined. That's why it's confusing me. Yeah. Yeah, yeah. So there's the, the eight, and then I have the delay there. So. So the answer should be ten, according to this person, from the, from the, from the, you know, information from the professor here, that it should be, it should be ten. Uh. Four clocks, because you have four things to do, and then. Uh, an extra one each time. Uh, okay, so someone found this. Let's see what this, let's see what this is. This is something, looks like the professor's writing. Says eight, says eight, question mark, right? Says eight, question mark. So. Yeah, so eight would just be, eight would, I would agree. Um. But would I even agree? I said nine here, because. You need. Why do I have nine? That's, the number's confusing me. Why I have nine here? Because it is four each. But then I guess you don't, uh, it's really five each, and then there's one overlap, so it turns into nine. So then I would think that the actual solution would be like twelve, because then you need to have more. Because of that. Or eleven, I guess. One extra clock for each transaction. Eleven in total, there you go. Take one more stage to get the pipeline final, right? Yeah. I wish there was a nice, clean answer to this. Four for read, plus four for write. Plus one cycle for the first read request. Yeah, yeah, yeah. That's why I have nine here. That makes sense, right? Yeah. And then. The initiate part is the only thing that's like weird, but. Yeah. Can we go over different types of this question later? Yeah, for sure. I think someone sent me here. I have a similar one. Similar question? Can try this now. What, what is it? Consider an SOC with two masters, PE one, PE two, and a memory device. AHB connects the masters. With the slave memory and a round robin arbiter is used to manage the bus. PE one master writes five thirty-two bit words in a burst mode, starting at memory location sixty. The second master, PE two, reads five thirty-two bit words from the same memory locations in burst mode. There will be a three clock cycles delay in between these two burst operations to facilitate arbitration. Draw the timing diagram. Okay. So this is in a round robin arbiter. So this just means like, it just goes around. It's like, grant this guy, then grant this guy. So we don't really have to think about that, because it basically just tells us, it already tells us that PE one does this. The second master reads from the same memory location. There will be a three clock cycle delay, so we're, we're probably gonna just assume that PE one goes first and then PE two. And that's the whole arbitration there. Am I taking off my sweater? It's a little hot. All right. Feeling much better? So the. Question is to draw the picture, and let's draw the, let's, let's do that. Let's draw the picture. I will just take a screenshot. I don't think we have a solution for this question. It's just a question, so. I mean, it's gonna be pretty similar. We're just gonna have a three clock cycle delay in there, right? So why don't I? This is not my best, not my best work here, but I might, I might just copy this. Put it here. At least for the clock. Oh, no, but we need, shorter, the clock's too big. Okay, so let's just redo it. So the. H clock. And we have H. Address. Adder. And then we have H. Write. Write, if I can spell. H trans. H burst. H read data. And then we have H, H write data. Oh, gave me the clock. Realized it gave me the clock. Okay, so I can just, you just move that to the side. I don't need H clock, right? I could just kinda do it here. Maybe make this a little bit bigger. And then just put this underneath. Okay, good. There you go. That works out. Perfect. So. Now, let's see. What we need to do. Okay, can I send this snippet of the question here? I can do that. So, let's try it. We have H address, right? So it's zero X. Well, let's just, let's just do decimal. Why zero X? Let's just do decimal. So a decimal sixty, right? Uh, we're assuming PE one's gonna go first here, I suppose. If anybody has any reason to not believe that, let me know. But I'm just gonna assume that goes first. So on this clock right here, we're gonna have an address of sixty. Being sent. And then on the next clock. Draw some lines here. On the next clock, we will have, uh, sixty-four. Right? Because it's thirty-two bits, five words, right? PM messages, thirty-two bit words, so it's gonna be. Or no, uh, no, it'll be. Sixty-one, right? Will it be? No. Will it? Sixty-four? We're going, uh, it's vital. No, it'll be sixty-four. Could go, going up by four. Yeah, I think it's sixty-four. If anybody has any things to say about that, let me know. But I think it's sixty-four. And then sixty-eight. And then seventy-two. Uh. Then it goes up by four, but still need to convert sixty to X. Well. Yeah. I'm just doing it in decimal. I would just, I'm just gonna write seventy-two. That's what I was gonna write. And if I'm doing it in decimal, I think it still just goes up by four. And then this is seventy-six. So because it does five transfers. Then the second master, okay, so anyways, that's the first transaction. This is going to be, uh, it is a. Write, right? So it's gonna be asserted high. Right? Asserted high like that, this whole time, because it's writing. The transfer is, it's gonna start as, it's gonna start as non, and I'll just say N SEQ, because it's small. And then the rest of these are all SEQs. S, my hexagons are really bad, but anyways, S-E-Q-S-E-Q. Let's just do it like that. There you go. Right? So these are all. Just to see, part of the sequence. Then what else do we need? H burst? Well, five, a burst of size five, I don't think is allowed. Okay, so is that, is that, uh, relevant? Because is it like, is it gonna be burst four and then burst one? Because the size is like one. Oh, I think you can speci-, you can use the non-specified increment? Okay. Yeah, I do vaguely remember that from the, from the slides. Why don't we take a look at the slides quickly? So. The, uh, lectures, annotated lectures, and then this would be in the, this one. And then. Non. Spes. Okay. It's not working. Uh, maybe I'm going too far here. This is A, what are we on? A, we are, we are doing AHB. Yeah, we're doing AHB light. So let's see here, transactions, busy. Sequence, no. H burst. Burst types. Single transfer. Oh, INCR, incrementing burst of unspecified length. So I could just do that, I guess. Is it just INCR? That's the thing? Okay, so it's just INCR. INCR this whole time. And then we are writing, so write data, I'm suppo-, I, I suppose, write data also has to be on the next clock. So write data here has to be, um, this is the data for sixty. The data for sixty-four. The data for sixty-eight. The data for seventy-two. My, my, I just zoom in. It's hard to write so small. That's why my writing is awful right now. And this is for seventy-six in there, right? That's my seventy-six like that. Okay, so then that's, that's that. So I guess this increment, well, no, it doesn't go for it. Anyways, so then, once we send all those. Then there's a cre-, three clock cycle break, right? Well, I guess we can, we can go here. So this is the, the, yeah, non-sequence, sequence, 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 sequence. And then probably this is gonna go to idle. And it's gonna do that for three clock cycles. Because it told us in the question. It said in the question. Um. Uh, there will be a three clock cycle delay in between the two burst operations to facilitate arbitration. So it's gonna be I. Null. I'll just write it like that, but you should write idle in each one. Idle. And then what's gonna be happening the whole time? Well, it doesn't really matter what this is, right? This is just kind of, I don't care what's happening here. And then the, I also don't care what's happening here. I don't really care what's happening anywhere. So there we go. That's that. Then the, we're gonna be reading, right? This P two is reading. Reads five thirty-two bit words from the same address, right? So this is now going to be, well, it's probably just gonna stay high for that long, right? One, two, three clock cycles. And then now it's gonna go down. To be, uh, a read, and it's gonna be reading from the exact same addresses, so I can just put this back. Nothing's changing there, right? I'm just gonna put that back like that. Well, I guess I need to like squeeze it in like that. Where, where's the clock? Is it lining up? That's, that's good, good enough, I guess. Oh, no, sorry, what am I saying? That's not good enough at all. That goes there. There. Like that. Right? Because this is now. And I go down like that. This is gonna go down like that. This is gonna go down like this. So same address going on the bus. And now. Again, this increment will probably just be the same. INCR. And the data, well, the data will also be the same, right? But this is now going to be on the read data. So it's gonna go here instead. But I'm gonna have to sort of, kind of line it up there properly. Okay. There we go. That's that. So that is how many clocks? I guess it takes. fourteen clock cycles to get to the end here? Oh, the reads pipeline. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Oh, yeah. So this should be one more to the side. So it takes fifteen clock cycles. I guess I should also put this stuff. I forgot to put this stuff, right? So this is gonna be I'll just say N S for non-sequence. And then this is gonna be S for sequence. And then be S for sequence. S for sequence. S for sequence. And we got fifteen clock cycles. Okay, that's good now. Determine the number of clock cycles required to initiate and perform. So the initiate part is like I, like, do we do? Maybe three clock? Okay, I'm assuming this is the initiate. This is all like, there's no initiate before this. This is the fifteen clock cycles. Required to initiate and perform the above read and write burst transfer operations alternatively, like alternating for one hundred word words write and a hundred words read by P E one, P E two. Right? Okay, so there's gonna be a three clock cycle arbitration period here, too, right? So in total, it's gonna be one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen. And then that can just keep looping. So it's sixteen clocks per transfer. Because there's three, three, like, oh, you can put it here if you want. You can put it here. It doesn't matter. I'm just gonna put it at the start just so that it's before. And there's three clock cycles between transfers. So sixteen clock transfer, clock cycles per, per transfer. Sixteen times a hundred? Hundred and sixty. Determine the number of clock cycles. Yeah, respect. Yeah, okay, that's fine. Yeah, so that's what I have to say. I think it's a hundred and sixty clock cycles. If anybody has anything they disagree with me with? Um, yes, I definitely do mean thousand six. Uh, thousand six hundred clock cycles. Anybody has anything they disagree with? Let me know. I'm happy to discuss this. I don't know if this is the answer, but this is my answer. Yeah, so it's, it's, uh, I'm really just kind of counting like, how many clocks did it take to initialize and do all of this, right? So there's gonna be three clocks at the start, which are just for arbitration. One, two, three. And then I just start counting, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen. And here, I don't count that because the, the next arbit, three clocks for arbitration starts right here. So I don't need to count, I don't need to count that, but I think they start right here. So, so, but this is like the repeating period, right? This is a repeating sixteen clocks. That keeps repeating. Takes N plus one clock cycle to complete a read where N is the number of words. So if takes N plus one clock cycle to complete a read where N is the number of words. So we have five here. So if it reads a hundred, then it is one hundred and one clock cycles for the same write. Oh, did it? So did I read the question wrong? Is that what you're saying? Because it says determine the number of clock cycles required to initiate and perform the above read and write burst transfer operations alternatively for a hundred word writes and a hundred word reads. Okay, so we don't need to, it's not a sixteen clock cycle thing that's repeating. It's like the burst is of size one hundred? Could be that the burst is of size one hundred. That, it's kind of, I don't know if, okay, so read burst transfer operations alternatively for a hundred word write and a hundred word read. I thought it was just like do this a hundred times, but that doesn't really make sense because that wouldn't be a hundred words, right? That would be five hundred words. So could it, could it be? Yeah, you know, it, it doesn't say if we're still doing five at a time. But I'm assuming, okay, assuming here it's not five at a time. If it's not five at a time. Okay, let's see here. I think, I don't know what he means, but alternatively though, it doesn't mean every word we alternate. Yeah, right? It could, it could be. It could mean every word we alternate. But I, I think reasonably the two options here are either you stick with this burst size of five. Burst size of five. And so then you just, so then I think the answer would be sixteen? Hundred? No, no, but then that would be five hundred words. Okay, so it's not that. It's definitely not that. It could be a hundred words, five at a time, that's twenty transfers. So you would just do this twenty times. Right? You just do this twenty times. And so that would be three hundred and twenty clock cycles. That's if you're doing this as a burst transfer. Am I multiplying wrong? I'm multiplying. No, no, I'm not multiplying wrong. That is right. Okay. Three hundred and twenty clock cycles. Because you just do this twenty times, five words at a time. That's that. Yeah, five. Plus three. You think three twenty is most likely the answer? Where, yeah. Okay. I'm willing to accept that. I'm, so we're interpreting the question as saying, how many clock cycles would it take for P E one to write a hundred words and P E two to read a hundred words, assuming we're still doing burst size of five? I think that's a reasonable way of interpreting the question. There we go. I mean. Uh, would it be then, and do you think because idle before the next write too? Yeah, but I'm kind of accounting for that already. Like that's, this is the period that's restarting, right? So like, I have the three at the start. And then five, and then three at the start. And then five, and then this three here would be the three from the previous, from the next thing moving over. Like that moves over to here. Right? So there you go. So it's still sixty. Okay, so, so twenty came from one hundred words divided by five words per transfer. Okay, I, I don't know. That's my answer. Um, okay, so that's that question done and the sample final done. So now, why don't we take a look at problem set three? Let's go through problem set three. Uh, are the other problem sets relevant at all? I don't think so. But I don't know. So problem set three. I'll just title it here. Problem is at three. So now, uh, let's start this. So question one. Suppose a processor has a bus transaction ti, or, yeah. I read that wrong. Suppose a processor has bus transactions that consist of cash line transfers. Assume that eighty percent of those transactions move a single line, doesn't matter. They occupy the bus for twenty cycles. And twenty percent move a double line, which takes thirty-six clock cycles. Assume that a, you know, a cache miss transaction occurs every two hundred cycles. So you know, we can find the average. Right? The average bus transaction time by doing point eight times twenty plus point two times thirty-six. Twenty, right? Yeah, twenty. Plus point two times thirty-six. So I get twenty-three point two. So this is the average number of clock cycles per transaction. Determine the mean bus transaction time. That's what we just did. That's, that's one. But why don't we call this like A and B here? Right? So this is one, and this is A. And then for, so A, and then for B, uh, find the bus occupancy for in the case of a single processor system. So the bus occupancy, remember, is BTT over BTT plus, I don't know, total or something. I don't know what to call it. So, uh, we know that every two hundred clock cycles there is a transaction. It doesn't matter. We're using the average, right? So it doesn't matter. There's a transaction every two hundred clock cycles. So then I think we just do BTT. How long is that actually spent transacting, right? Doing a transaction? Well, twenty-three point two clock cycles, twenty-three point two clock cycles, and then the total time computationally between those is two hundred. So this is gonna be twenty-three point two over twenty-three point two plus two hundred. Oops. Oops. About ten percent. There's that. Then it says find the bus occupancy when there are four processors connected to the bus. What will be the contention time? Okay, so again, this is like really two questions, so A and B being asked here, right? So for part two, A says bus occupancy when there are four processors connected. So what we do is we do this iterative thing, right? We do this N row A equals one minus, one minus A uh, to the N. N is four in this case. Right? So it's gonna be, uh, because four processors. And we start out with A being equal to row, which is, you know, well, let's use the actual point one zero. Let's give it one more decimal place, one, zero, four, let's say. And we iteratively go through this until it like somewhat, I don't know, until you just had enough, until the numbers aren't changing that much, right? That's, that's what it is. All right? So this is gonna be iterative, iteration one, I mean, iteration one. So for this iteration, we have that row A is one minus, one minus, zero point one oh four to the four over four. And so you type this into your calculator and you have one minus one minus, zero point one oh four to the four over four. And you get that row A is zero point zero eight, 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 seven. And then you need to find A still, right? And A is a function of row A and row. Of course, I don't remember the formula, but I wrote it down on a formula sheet here. So this is, is a big formula, right? It's a row over row over row plus row A over row one minus row. So this is gonna be, whatever, you just type that all in, right? You said type that all into your calculator. So row from before, right? So it's gonna be you always, the row is always the same. It's one, zero point one oh four over zero point one oh four plus, and then we have zero point zero eight, eight, eight. Why don't I write this one down just so that we see it, but zero point one oh four. Let's get the number here. One minus one point, one minus, zero point one oh four. Okay. So just to write, just like, I'll just write this one out. I won't write all of them out. Zero point one oh four over zero point one oh four plus zero point eight, zero eight, 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 seven over zero point one oh four. Four, one minus, zero point one oh. Okay, and I get zero point one one nine six. That's the A. And that's what you use for the next iteration. Right? So for the next iteration, we have that row A is equal to, go back to green, row A is equal to one minus, one minus, zero point one one nine six uh, to the four over four, right? And so I took that, that A value from before and put it back into the equation there like that. And then you do that again. You find your A, row A, and then from there you find your A. And then you just keep going. And so then the, the answer to the question is the row, bus occupancy, right? Row A when you are finished all of that. And how far do you go? I don't know. You, let's see how many, I, uh, does this teacher have a solution? Uh, no, done as part of lecture. It's in, it's in the lecture. Annotated bus model. Yeah, I, I mean, he doesn't, he doesn't write all of it, obviously, right? But it's a dot, dot, dot. After some amount of iterations, we get our final row A to be zero point zero nine five. Just gotta kind of like whittle down to be something closer. Okay, so there we go. So that's that's, that's, we found the, um, bus occupancy. The contention time is something we calculate. And I think it's based on row A. Uh, it's based on row A. Yeah. So you take your row A value. So this is for part B of that question. So you take your row A and you do the whole thing again. BTT over, right? Yeah, BTT plus, you know, like the CPU time plus C. And that C on the bottom, that's the new thing. That's the contention time. So we just need to solve for that, right? So we know that this is zero point zero nine five equals now, let's remember what's happening, right? So um, I guess it's twenty-three point two, right? Twenty-three point two over twenty-three point two plus two hundred plus C. And you just re, you just solve this equation for C. However, you want to do that, right? You just solve for C. And then, uh, you get, um, that it's, uh, twenty-one. Uh, I was, sorry, this, you know, this gives you that C equals twenty-one and the units, it's in clock cycles, right? Everything's in clock cycles. So that's on my formula sheet. Talk about the formula sheet in a little bit too, but that's that. Yeah, again, anybody stop me if you have any questions? I'm happy to help, but yeah, there you go. So problems, let me, let me get the next question up. So the next question here says, consider a split address plus bidirectional data bus that is thirty-two plus sixty-four bits wide. Probably thirty-two bit address and sixty-four bit data, or maybe other way, other way around. Actually, probably, probably the other way around. But anyways, a typical bus transaction uses thirty-two bit memory address, there, there you go, there you go. Thirty-two bit memory address and sixty-four bit data transfer. The memory access time is twelve cycles. So this, this just gives you BTT essentially, right? This gives you BTT. So, um, it's, you know, no calculation needed. The access time, the average access time is, uh, twelve cycles. If four processors use the bus described above, and ideally without contention, each processor generates a transaction every twenty cycles. What is the offered bus occupancy? So the offered bus occupancy, I think is just the same again, right? So for part one, it's again, I think it's just twelve over twelve plus twenty. Someone correct me if I'm wrong about that. It's twelve over twelve plus twenty. Oops. Zero point three seven five. And this is like our row. Then for part two, it says without resubmissions, what is the achieved occupancy? Without resubmissions, the formula is N row A equals one minus row to the N. No iterative formula needed. We can just solve, I just plug, like, I just basically I just plug row in, right? So this tells me that row A. I just plug row in, right, so this tells me that row A. Is one minus, zero point three seven five. To the four, over four, and that's it, no iterative, iterative, iterative formula, it's just, it's just that. Um, so this is. One minus, zero point three seven five. To the four over four. Zero point zero three eight one. So that's the no resubmissions formula, with resubmissions, that's the iterative formula. Okay, did it say anything about resubmissions of this, up here? No. It didn't. But you're supposed to do with the iterative formula, so, I guess it's just, you just assume if it doesn't say anything, it says, it's with resubmissions. So, now we'll just do that, it's the same thing again though, right? So for here, sorry, my nose is itchy, um, for here, uh, the formula is N row A is. One minus, one minus, A to the N. Yeah, this is like that, this is really four, right? So. So. To solve this. Using the bus model with resubmissions, what is the achieved occupancy, yeah, to solve this, we just start by setting A equal to row. Which is zero point three seven five, and you, you just do the iterative formula again, right, so you find your row A. Based on the row A, then you use that big formula, use, use this guy to find A. And then you, you go on from there. And it'll, it'll, you know. It will. Uh, what's the word, like stabilize, stabilize on a number, that's not, the word converge, that's the word, it'll converge on some number. Let me see if, uh, some of these click on, where, where, problem set, that's what I'm trying to click on, problem set. So we see if there's anything in the solution. Um, no. Three, one. A equals zero point three seven five, get row A from equations, row A, yeah, there you go. And then he shows like a part four in the solution here, he says like, part four would be like, find the contention time. The contention time would be exactly like we did it right here, right, the contention time would be just, you do this. And you put a C term in the bottom there, you solve for that C, and that's like the contention time. Okay. I'm just gonna move on, but someone, anybody please stop me if you wanna talk about something. Consider a wormhole routing based communication in a four by four NOC, determine the average number of clock cycles needed to transmit. Two hundred fifty-six bits of data, where the width of the NOC link is sixteen wires and the header size is sixty-four. So, uh, the, this, this, just a formula for this, right, the formula for this is T wormhole, TW. Is equal to TCH, which is like the clock, I don't know why it's called CH, but TCH. Over, times H O, D times H over W plus L over W. Okay, so for us, right, this is going to be, um, I don't know TCH, right, I don't know the time, so we're just gonna say it's one. And it's gonna be in terms of clock cycles, right? Just make it in terms of clock cycles, I'll put TCH here, but if you, if you just remove it, it's gonna, your answer's gonna be clock cycles. Um, anyways, then, uh, D, my understanding of, for D, is that it is just always two. For a four by four mesh or torus NOC. It represents the average number of hops, supposedly. Anyways, header size is sixty-four. W is the link length sixteen. Link, uh, length, L is like length of the actual thing, two fifty-six. Divided by sixteen, and that's gonna be your number of clocks there, so two, sixteen, four, sixteen, two, yeah, yeah, so it's gonna end up being twenty-four. Clock cycles. Only thing that's weird in this question is that, is the two, the two is like. I did not put that two there when I first did this question, but. There we have it. Okay, question four. So, question four. A static switching interconnect is implemented as a four by four torus with a, with wormhole routing. Each path is bidirectional. Was this one also switching? No, wormhole routing. Wormhole routing, okay, anyways, each path is bidirectional with thirty-two wires, each wire can be clocked at four hundred megabits per second. For a message consisting of an eight bit header and a hundred and twenty-eight, eight bit payload. What is the expected latency? From one node to an adjacent node. What is the average message latency in cycles, what is the total message transit time? Um, okay, so we're probably gonna need to use that other formula, the. The, it's thirty-two wires. The message is only has an eight bit header. So, first of all, I think that header is just gonna be counted as a thirty-two bit pack, package, right? Because it's only eight bits, but, I mean, there's thirty, thirty-two wires, you can't start mixing stuff, right, so it, it's gonna take all thirty-two, so it's gonna. It's not like that takes less than one clock, that's gonna be, take a full thirty-two. Full one clock. I have to look at the solution for this one, this one, I, I, I do not recall, we have to, so, the first thing is. A, uh, where did it say, the wire can be, uh, clocked at four hundred megabits per se- megabits per second, right? Okay, so he just immediately turns that into four hundred. Megahertz. Which is two point five nanoseconds. Two point five nanoseconds. Then, the average. The average, so to answer the, oh no, that's part two. Yeah, so what is the expected latency in cycles for a message to transmit from one node to an adjacent node, I mean, isn't that either one clock cycle? What is a message, is a message the entire, yeah, for a message consisting of eight bits? Okay, so the message consists of, well, let's find how many flits, I guess, right, so it's gonna be, um, eight over six. How many wi- thirty-two wires, plus one twenty-eight over thirty-two, but this, like. S- you know, ceiling of this, right, like, because you can't have less than what, thirty-two bits. It's just all zeros or something like that, or just ignore them, right, but. So it's one plus, and then this is like five or something, or four, so it's five, right, five flits. So that's the packet size, we're assuming a message is the same as a packet. So now, the time. You know, T wormhole here, T. T wormhole. I can't tell from the solution, is, like, what? What answers to what, you know? So like, what is the answer to the first part, what is the expected latency in cycles? He points at this, but then says average, which is the answer to the second question. Which would make sense, the average mesh, message latency, it would be the clock time, two, again, that random two. Times one, the one is because I'm like rounding up that whole thing. I'm rounding eight over thirty-two to one, and then one twenty-eight over thirty-two. So I'd get fifteen nanoseconds. So that makes sense for the second part, I can write that, it's fine, but. But then. Yeah, and then here he's trying like different things, right, here he's trying like a hop length of three. Right, but you don't, but you don't have to do that, cuz it says average, right, so the average is just gonna be. With two, like for the, like, that's the average distance, average hop length in general for a four by four, and let's see, it's two. So, what is the total message transit time, well, the total message transit time. The total message transit time, how is that different? Like from the start, like, there's no answer here, first of all, just didn't answer that part of the question. Is there anything at the bottom here? I don't know, I don't really have a good answer for this one, I mean, I can, I can answer the, the average part, right, like this part two. Right, the T wormhole is this TCH, right, and then this is two times. Eight over thirty-two. But he has to round that, you have to round that up, and then plus one twenty-eight over thirty-two. Right, I'm just using the same formula as this. And that D value is like the number of hops, which we just, again, for average, when it says average, we just use the number two. Okay, for one, okay, sure, that makes sense, okay, I guess that, that actually does make sense also with what's happening here, right? So for an adjacent node. So I can just do that, that D value is one, if it's an adjacent node, right? So then that's going to be, you know, two point five times one plus four. So five times, uh, expected latency, oh, in cycles, so no two point five, right? Just in cycles, so it's just a five psych, five cycle delay, which makes sense, cuz it's just like, there's five flits, each one cycle, each cycle, one flip goes by. So then there's five, um, clock cycles. And then for the other one. It wants average met latency in cycles again, and we use two for this one, because that's the average distance. Right, one twenty-eight over thirty-two, so this is gonna be six clock cycles, just like a one more clock cycle. Or two, yeah, two plus four is six, yes, it is, and then what is the total message transit time? I mean, I guess six times two point five nanoseconds, I guess, I guess, that's what I'm saying, what is the. What is the average total message transit time is maybe what, uh, is what is meant here? That is probably what is meant, what is the average total message transit time, or just average message transit time? And then it would just be six times two point five, but that's not what it says, the total message transit time. I'm gonna assume the word average was meant to be put in there, in which case, you would just do six clock cycles. Yeah?
Um, for the T, the wormhole formula, right, for TCH, isn't TCH one by bandwidth? One over, I mean, one divided by bandwidth.
One.
Four hundred.
Yeah.
Megahertz, right, so why don't we use it here?
Why? Because it's, it's asking for everything in clock cycles, in cycles, in cycles, right? So, I, we don't need to, we don't need to get time at all, right, that's why, just because it's all, but then here it's asking for time. So maybe for this last one, that's why I would do this two point five nanoseconds.
Okay.
But the other ones are saying cycles. I also don't know how correct this is, but I read online somewhere that the average equals is because for two point three, they do. Square of sixteen over two, because it's X or Y, so that's how they get two. Yeah, possibly, right, so it's just like for, well, for two by two, or, do you mean for? Oh yeah, for two by two, no, no, you mean by four, four by four, but anyways, like, it's, there's some kind of thing like this, right? Where you can like calculate it, and then, uh, yeah, so. Yeah, makes sense, makes sense. So, we'll just use that value, when it says average, anything, in terms of hops, you like. Use the D value for two, which is the average number of hops. Total message transit time, I guess we'll just say that, right, cuz that's gonna be two point five times that. Okay. Again, stop me if you wanna talk about something, otherwise I will just keep going, so we got two more questions here.
Could you, okay.
Yeah. Question?
No, never mind, never mind.
You're good?
I thought I had a question, but I'm good, yeah.
Okay. So, the next one here says sketch the block diagram for an SOC. With one processor, one SRAM, one ROM, one counter timer, all those things, all connected to a single bus, no bridges. Back in front, yeah, that's true. So, I'll start by drawing the picture. Well, I started by drawing a picture, cuz it's just a sketch, so it, I mean. Uh, I, I'm gonna assume it's literally just what it says, CPU, there's a CPU, SRAM, there's SRAM. ROM, there's a ROM. Counter slash timer. There. Draw a little better, counter slash timer, there we go. AD interface, there we go. Peripheral I O. Interface, all connected to a single bus without any bridges, okay. Is that, is this really it, I, I guess that's it, right, like, it's all connected to a single bus without any bridges. If it's that easy, then there you go, I guess, just all connected to a wire. Uh, is it appropriate for DMA to be supported or used in the above SOC, so DMA is like, uh, direct memory access or? Direct memory access, it's basically just like the, what is it, the I O can access the SRAM, I think. Correct me if I'm wrong here, but I think it's that I O can access the SRAM without having to first access the CPU, and then the CPU brings it to the SRAM. The DMA controller just brings it, uh, directly to the SRAM, to like where it needs to go. So what, is it appropriate for DMA to be supported or used in the above SOC? I mean, I don't see why not, the question seems to be leading on, leading us on to say no. But I, I don't, I don't see why not, I mean, there, it seems like it's an advantage to have that. Uh, does anybody have any, any, any thoughts about this? I don't know if there's. Yeah, I don't know, that's, that's kind of, that's kind of it, let me see. If, uh, I have a solution here. Where are we? Now, this can go away. This can also go away. And then. No. No, yeah, I don't know, anybody have an idea? I, I mean, I think, yeah. Is, uh, let's see, is. Tree online. Where did he go? Uh, he's not online, okay, I don't, yeah, I, I like, I, this is just like a kinda, a little bit lost, I, did he even ever talk about a DMA controller? In this course? I remember in seven one eight, he talked about DMA controller, but I, I don't know if he ever talked about it. In this course. Um, anyways, what are the modi- I mean, if someone has an answer, please tell me, but that's, that's it, not that I recall, yeah, exactly. So then, uh, what modifications are needed if a second processor core is to be added? So a second processor core, right, a second CPU. Is to be added, CPU, okay, I'll just draw it with my actual pen here, um, C P U. Then. Some modifications that would be needed, well, now, you know, the traffic is gonna increase, obviously, because there's gonna, there's another thing on the bus. Um, is a second bus addition? Is a second bus addition, will it be a good, will be a good idea? Okay, anyways, is another bus a good idea, then the. I mean, it could be, yeah, I think, I think the point is, I don't, I don't know if the point is like that there is a correct answer, it's just like, discuss it a little bit. So, you know, if you had another bus, right, if you had another bus here, then you'd need a bridge between them. A bridge between the, the buses. Bridge, uh, and if you put the other CPU on that bridge, on that others, on that other bus, I mean. Uh, and if you put the other CPU on that bridge, on that others, on that other bus, I mean. Right, then there's gonna be some more traffic. But it could be a good idea, because what if there's, this CPU is gonna handle most of the things that have to do with the analog to digital converter, right? Or the, whatever, the counter or timer, maybe that's the CPU, that CPU will handle most of that. Um, most of those operations, and then the SRAM here will, so, so maybe, maybe that should go. Or maybe the other way around, maybe this is the CPU that's gonna handle most of the things that needs to, needs to do with this and needs to do with this. Um, whereas the, maybe the ROM and the, uh, really just the ROM, I guess, could go over here, right? With the other, with the other CPU. So that you could have like application specific. Uh, CPUs that are like, that are being scheduled to do certain tasks. Then that might be a reason to have another bus there to just reduce the overall congestion. But then you need to have a bridge, and you need to have another bus. So that's a lot more, there's a lot more things going on. Um. I don't know, that's my answer. That's, that's my answer. If anybody has anything to add, please tell me, but yeah, that's, that's all. I will move on to the next question, which is the last question. Uh, question six. So. Question six here. Consider an N O C based S S C interconnection, what are the main differences between using multiple number of bus bridges and a fabric and a network fabric? Okay, um, so for, for, for one, for I, I guess. Uh, first thing, network. Network sends packets. One thing, right? We have packets to be sent. And this has a bunch of different, you know. Offshoots, but it sends packets instead. And then the, you know. Uh. How can we phrase this? If you had just like a, if you just had a bunch of buses, but connecting a bunch of different things. I mean, would that not be the same as a network? Probably not. What are those, what are those? Uh, what are those differences? I wrote something earlier about this, so let me see what I have here. Okay, so the, like, the bus, I said the bus bridge, it's like, um, anyways, the bus bridge introduces latency. But doesn't the router also do that? I guess the router, but the router, like, also induces latency, but I guess, whatever, bus bridge, it does as well. Um, the overall bandwidth is limited by the bandwidth of the individual buses and the bridges connecting them. Um, scalability? I guess they don't mean like, okay, so I guess I'm, I'm thinking about this a little bit too, too much, like. The question isn't saying, what if you tried to create an N O C just using a bunch of bridges, just like connecting things like routers? They just mean like, what if you had like three buses, or you just did an N O C instead? Like with, with a whole bunch of things connected, right? So the fir- first thing is like, that there are many concurrent paths that can be going through. An N O C, right? You have like many, many concurrent. Concurrent transfers. Right? Happening at the same time, because they can take different paths through the N O C. Um, and then there's like, also like the overhead, right? So the, like, the, the network is gonna have to calculate a bunch of routing information. Right? Where the bus doesn't really, it's kind of just like, puts it on the bus, and then whoever's supposed to get it, gets it. And like scalability and stuff like this, right? Those big keywords, scalable, N O Cs are scalable and, and so on. Um. Describe a buffering technique for N O C links that might be used in an N O C. Click here. It might be a buffering technique for N O C links that might be used in N O C. So there's like, you, you, there's like, you can just buffer the whole thing, if you just wanna buffer the whole packet and wait for the entire packet to arrive. You can also just buffer, uh, until, like, you just buffer the head. Until you get the next packet, so it's like a, a single flip buffer. That's, that's basically it, right? So you could just, you could just do that. You could do virtual channel buffering, so that you have like different channels to, for different, uh, for the same port. Uh, let's see what else I have here, each communication link, each virtual channel, that's it. So that's my answer here. Um, what was my answer? My answer was, uh, you could, you know, buffer the entire packet. Buffer just one flip at a time. You could also have virtual channel buffering. And then the last one is flow control techniques for an N O C. And identify at least one of the flow control techniques that can be preferably used in N O Cs. List the main advantages. Um, so the flow control, oh, someone said something here. Oh yeah, here's someone. Picture about comparing them, yeah, right? So. This all just means like scalability, link speed unaffected, right? So if you, if you, uh. If the number of masters goes, goes up on a bus, then it generally slows down, because they're all gonna be like, you know, trying to get access to the bus. But if you just have more routers in an N O C, that doesn't really slow things down necessarily, it's just like more places to send things to. Um. No concurrency, network on chips have concurrency and all that, right? Okay, and then various flow control techniques. So for flow control, right, we, there was those, there were those slides at the, at the end of. Here. Lectures. It goes at the end of this one. No, it was not the end of this, it was the end of the previous one. Right? Nope, am I wrong? I'm wrong. Uh, where is it? Oh, it's N O C, sorry, sorry, sorry. We're doing, yeah, it's an N O C, so it's here, it's the end of this one. There we go. So we have the different flow controls. So it's just like, if, if the next thing should go, right? If, 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 uh, how should I explain it? It's like, see here. Allocate network resources for packets to traverse. It's like, which routers should take on more packets? Resolve, resolving contention during package reversal, managing congestion. Retransmission, so if like, if. If a router tries to transmit to the next router, but then that router is full, what do you do, right? So that's managing retransmission. So, uh, yeah, so flow control mechanism. Uh, blah, blah, blah. Here's the different types. Buffer back pressure. So this just basically means, uh, how does that? These slides are such a mess. What, what, what's the next one already? Flow control with resource reservation needs mechanism to prevent buffer overflow. Significant impact on throughput achieved by flow control. I have some notes on this, but it, I don't even know if I understood it. Oh, maybe I. I may have. Uh, written something with the help of chat G P T. To get some more words in this, you know, just like, kind of like fact, put some more facts in this at least. Yeah, there's some more stuff, right? Some of this is, some of this was with the assistance of chat G P T here. Buffer, whoops. Regulates data transmission based on the occupancy levels of buffers upstream, close, or no, downstream. Right? Buffer availability downstream. Uh, back pressure receivers may send back pressure signals to senders to reduce data tran- retransmission. So that's like what's happening in this example. Right? So here, where are we? This example. This is the wormhole, right? So you have the source. The header moves. The header moves again, the next flip moves as well. But the header is blocked, so the header sends a back signal. So flip two still moves, but it sent a back signal here, so F three now knows, okay, I can't move anymore. So you see F three doesn't move, but F four still moves, F four didn't get that signal yet, that, that back pressure signal, right? That, to like not move. So F four still moves, but now the tail flip knows, so it's all stopped. But at this point. At this point, this has been released, right? So this, this header flip can move. And it released the no transfer signal from here, F three still is now available to, so F, in the next slide, F three is gonna move forward. But T F is not, right? F three moved forward, but T F is not, because T F still has this, you know, not allowed signal going backwards here. And then now everything's just gonna go one by one to the, to the end there. That's like the back pressure. So if I saw this question, I'd just talk about back pressure, right? That's, because that's the only one that I even a little bit understand. They're not, they're not wildly hard, but it's just like, slides are such a, such a mess, right? Um. So, so that's the idea. Stall and go flow control, I think that's actually the same thing, isn't it? Flow control with resource reservation, low overhead schemes requires only two control lines, sounds right to me. Request, going forward. Good performance, no positioning, I mean, it's pretty much the same thing, right? So yeah, so if I were answering this question on a test, I would start talking about flow, um, back pressure. List the main advantages, simple to put together. Right? Just a couple wires. And, uh, it's generally for like wormhole, wormhole is pretty popular, so it's a popular one. Something, something along those lines, like, it's, it's kind of a toss up this question here, but there you go. Just talk enough and say the right things, I think it's okay, but he doesn't, he doesn't love giving part marks. So. For word questions. Anyways, that's the problem set. And that's the sample final, so why don't we, uh, I don't know, what, what else is there that you guys might wanna go over? Right? So, you know, it's like, what now? We might, we might wanna talk about, you know, what should go on the formula sheet? Uh, then we could try, I know there's a couple examples in the slides, I guess, so we could try that. Let's maybe take a ten minute break, right? And, uh, do this stuff, so maybe a formula sheet and slides, couple examples. Lines. Um, let's take a ten minute break and then maybe go for another hour till eight thirty, maybe, and then, and then, you know, wh- wh- once we finish this stuff and then. That'll probably be the time. Okay with everybody? Hopefully. So, uh, yeah, let's take a little break until seven thirty, take a ten minute break, and then, uh, we'll be, we'll be back to, to finish this stuff. So I'll see you guys at seven thirty, I'll just, uh, I'll pause the. Uh, where is it? A F K, there it is, break, back at. Not seven oh seven. How do I change the text? Up again. Go back to this. There we go. I always like that transition. When it goes to the, uh, let's do it again. Goes to like the infinite scroll. There you go. It's pretty good. Um, okay, so, so yeah, so let's just finish up here. Not more than an hour. Unless we have stuff to talk about, but probably not more than an hour. Formula sheet. Um, this is my plan. First of all, yeah. Oh, this, hold on. Matt, you said something? I can tell you said something. I did not hear. Did it? Is that my fault?
I'm still looking at the, the back at seven screen.
Oh, are you?
Yep.
Is that everybody? Is it frozen? Matt?
Could just be me, I'm not sure.
It does actually say here, okay, I'll just stop sharing. And share again. Any better? Hopefully that's good. I think should be good. Seems Discord seems to think I'm sharing the screen. So I'm going to assume that it's, it's good here and I'm recording and all that. Okay, good. So, um. So yeah, so formula sheet. This is my plan for the formula sheet. I guess let's just look at, you know. Do it down here. Formula. Ula sheet. So what do I have on it right now? I have the, the formulas that are like, um. I'll just highlight them as from, from here. These are the ones that I have on the formula sheet. So I'll highlight them in blue. So first of all, I have that on the formula sheet. Second thing I have, well, let me just use this one. Okay, so I have this on the formula sheet. I have that on the formula sheet and I have. That I guess, but with ends, you know, put in place. So that, 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 and then I just have like the basic like. The basic, uh. I guess that should, that could probably also go on there. Should put that on there. And that's it. And it's pretty empty. We can see it. Pretty empty though. I'm assuming we're allowed double, double sided. So things to add. I might do an example signal. Drawing for AHB, APB, Core Connect, if we have one of those and AXI. If there's an example for each of those. To be honest, I haven't fully, I didn't fully read those slides. I kind of just skimmed through them. So anyways, I know that those are the different kinds of buses. We did AHB today, two examples of AHB. I'm pretty sure it's AHB on the test, but I might put an example of each of these ones just in case he really tries to be mean. Right, for the, for those kind of bus transactions. Oh, you can't hear me? Might just be you. I don't know. Can I, I think other, I think Matt could hear me. Can it? Anybody else can comment on that? My little green light is showing up. Anybody? Anybody else having the same problem? You can hear, okay. Someone can hear, so then that might just be. That might just be you. Okay. So, okay, good. So yeah, so formula sheet and example signal drawing of each of those. That could be something to put on. Then maybe something would be good would be like the, the, uh, the, um, flow control schemes. Could also be some like definitions, uh, you know, bus related definitions. Related definitions. I mean, oh yeah, I guess I should have said this. I made like, uh, some slides, like some, like a Quizlet. I guess I could share that. But like. I did that before I really thought about the fact that I had, that we were writing a formula sheet. So it might be better to just turn some of these, turn, put this on a formula sheet, right? So like, I don't know. Uh, yeah, like dynamic routing. Oh, it's talk to me. I didn't realize it was going to talk to me when I click on it. Dynamic routing. If I highlight it, does it talk to me?
Dynamic routing.
I just, I just click it.
Routing that does consider the current congestion.
I don't know if you can hear that, but it's like Quizlet's talking to me. It's, it's, it's giving me, it's like reading them out loud. Um. So anyway, some of this stuff might be good to put on a formula sheet just as like a way, as like a definition, right? And here's the flow control stuff. Comparison of buses and NOCs. All this could be good to put on a formula sheet. I don't know about all of this, but just like some, some things to remember here. Uh, or you, you might just want to like use the Quizlet. I don't know. The Quizlet is probably not that helpful. It's probably better to just like put it on a, put it on a, uh. On the formula sheet, but I'll just post that. I'll post that just there, just in case anybody wants to look at that. Let me make that smaller. Change the size like that. Say like. Quizlet final. Theory. Memorization. Um. I don't know. Yeah, that, that's my suggestions. These are my suggestions of what to put on there. This is, this is it. And, and, and I'm probably going to have a lot more space left after that. So I don't know. That's, but that's, those are my suggestions. Okay, well, if anybody has any suggestions of what to put on, let me know. Otherwise I will, uh, maybe just start doing the. Doing the, um, last couple of examples from the slides. There's a couple in there. So the couple of examples from the slides would be. Uh, annotated lectures. Let's find it here. It's from the bus models. Okay, so let's look at these examples here. So, so we did. So there's the contention time, right? Uh, this example from the practice, from the problem set. This example also from the problems. Right? Yeah, it's also from the problems that this one, no solution. I don't know if it's from the problems. Consider wormhole. Determine the minimum number of clock cycles required to transmit one kilobits of data from one, one, three, four. Okay, I don't, I don't think we've done this. Uh, that's literally the only question. It's literally the only question. Thought there's going to be more than that, but I thought, thought there was a few on that. Presentation slide set, but there is not, so we have this. Okay. Uh, so it doesn't seem that hard. From one, one to three, four. Well, okay, first of all, what's the convention? It starts at zero, starts at one. Okay, so the convention starts at one. Doesn't really matter. Um, actually, it doesn't matter at all. So the number of hops. Equals. Um, five. Draw it out if you want. Right? So you're going from one, one to three, four. So it's one, two, three, four, five hops. Also just see like to get from one to three, that's two hops. To get from one to four, that's three hops. So five hops in total. And it doesn't matter what path you take, right? It's the same number of hops. That's kind of the whole point of doing a mesh or like a grid, grid like this. It's the same number of hops. Uh, the width of the NOC link is thirty two bits, probably bits. And the header size is thirty two. So what is the, determine the minimum number of clock cycles required? So we first have to figure out, uh, the, the clock cycles. Yeah, so this is just like T. Let's just say like the number of clock cycles is going to be, um, D. No, yeah, D times H over W plus L over W, right? D in this case is five, like we know it's five hops. Not, not two, because it's like two by, four by four. It's like no, no average and we know it's five hops. The header size is thirty two bits over a link width of thirty two. Uh, and then the data size is two to the ten over a link width of thirty two. Right? And so that's it. And then five times one plus thirty two. So five times thirty three. Which is. A hundred and sixty five. Let's see. Five times thirty three. Hundred and sixty five. So that should be the number of clock cycles to move it. That might not be right. So that is, that is how many? Five times, I guess the bracket actually is here. So that's how many? Cause shouldn't we be using the whole S plus one minus N minus one? So shouldn't it be like five plus? Five plus thirty two? So that'd be thirty seven again? Yeah, I think it might actually be that because it's pipelined. It's pipelined, right? So the whole pipeline thing is that it's like S plus N minus one. Times T clock, right? The clock time. And we don't, we just set that to one just because whatever it's clock time. It's in terms of clocks. And then that's the number of hops. So this is the hops. And this is N minus one. This is going to be, um, this is going to be thirty three or thirty two, right? Because it's N minus one. There's going to be thirty three flits. Is this not the exact same as the previous question that's on the final? Let's see. Is it up here? Was it from one, uh, it's from eight to three? Eight to thirteen, but like what's the difference from one to there? It's the same, same thing. Um, thirty two by Y, thirty two bit Y channels. Here it tells us the clock. Data is transferred, thirty three flits. Using XY routing and this is this whole thing. And this is XY routing. There's nothing here about wormhole, right? No, there's wormhole. Wormhole routing and then XY routing. So since it's XY routing, it's like this and maybe with wormhole, it's different? The answer is either thirty seven or a hundred and sixty five. I don't think it's a hundred and sixty five because that doesn't really make sense. Because we have. We have, um. Cause that would be like sequential. You're doing it sequentially, like not, no parallel, anything. So. Thirty seven N minus one. So what did I write if this was on a test? It was, what I would write if this was on a test. I need to incorporate five hops. Both way I'm incorporating five hops. Header size thirty two, that's one plus number of packets. Minimum number of clock cycles required to transmit. I would say thirty seven. Because. I think that matches that first question, like the question from the test the best. This is the time, but why are we getting a vastly different number for the clock cycles here? This is distance times basically packet size. Oh no, hold on. Yeah, this is, yeah, 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 yeah. No, 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 no. It's the same number. It's five plus thirty two. Goes thirty seven. Good. I just put the bracket in the wrong spot. It's five times one plus thirty two is thirty seven. There you go. Same number. Great. You get the same number either way. So thirty seven is probably the answer. Okay, guys, well, I think that's all I'm really planning on doing. I just have to write this formula sheet, but I'm not going to do that on camera. I mean, I'm just, I'm just going to write down a couple of things. I can take a picture of it and put in the chat after if, uh, you know, you guys wanted some information about what to put on there. But otherwise, there's not really that much else that I wanted to do. He mentioned that there exists textbook questions, but I don't know if I have the patience to, to go through that. To go into the textbook and look, because like who knows? He didn't, he didn't list. He didn't say any. Helpful ones here, right? Accelerator and basic SoCs. Yeah, this is. This is pre midterm. This is midterm content, yeah. There will be a midterm question, but I think that might be like what the first question is on this sample final. Uh, I lost it now anyways, whatever. It's like that first question. So yeah. Okay, guys, well. That's all I think from me for today. Uh, anybody have any questions before, uh, we sign off? All I'm going to do left for the night is, uh. Finish this formula sheet. In, in that case, I don't see anybody typing or anything like that. So in that case, I'm going to.